Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. It is, this is the planning board, regular monthly meeting is Tuesday, November 28th, it's 5:00 PM. And we have forum here. So good to see people in the audience here. We normally have people here, but it's nice to see. Thank you for coming. Minutes. Have you folks had a chance to commit? If you have, then I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes. So great.
Second.
Second by Grania. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Those who missed from October, from last month. Public comments, I normally, for those in the audience, I normally have a section here for public comments if anyone has a particular interest in talking about something. Not what's coming down the pike that later this evening we'll talk about, but things are on your mind or you want, we open the podium, come up and please come on up. And sure, sure.
Nada Barry, the Wolf Shop. I was at the village board meeting the other night, but some of you may not have been there. In which I just wanted to bring up my idea that you could put affordable housing above the Washington Street lot if you raised with pillars. And I didn't know everybody had heard that, who was in the plan.
I did hear that, I was there that night.
I just wanted to throw that out. We, the village owns that property, so there's no, not any problem. And I didn't bring up possibility of having architects compete or whatever of the village with a plan. And it's something we own and could be moved actually faster than what we are doing with next to the dump.
Let me just clarify what you're talking about. So on Washington Street, you were saying?
Washington Street lot.
Over by the?
Like they do on stilts or whatever.
Along Division Street, that corner? Is that right?
Yeah, on the corner there.
Yep, yep.
You could do two stories of, probably of affordable housing. And you still have most of your parking. You'd lose a bit of it.
Because of pylons.
You've got to go up.
I thought that was an interesting idea, and thank you for bringing it up. And thank you for mentioning it tonight. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience or online have any comments to make? Thank you, Nada. I think you're the first person to take advantage of this particular slot for public comment at the planning boards. I'm really appreciative. Thank you. We will move on to new business, pre-submission conference, public hearing. So this is Page Main LLC, Page Restaurant, as we know it, three Main Street. It's a pre-submission conference and public hearing. So just so folks in the audience know, this is a public hearing. It was, it was, it was noticed publicly. And it is, this is before formal submission to the board. So that's what we are doing tonight. And.
Yeah, we can all present to the board, and then if you have questions, you can ask them, and you can hear from the public.
That's great. So the applicant, I'm sure, is here. Hello.
Good evening. Here is the board to Page Carlotta, 45 Division Street, Staten Harbor, for the applicants. This is on the side.
Bravo. Thank you. Thank you, Doris, as always. Accept the motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Grania. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologize for that.
Carlotta, 45 Division Street, Staten Harbor, for the applicant. I also have with me here Eric Peel, who is the general manager at Page, as well as Salvatore Giangrelli, who is the project architect. As the board may know, we've been in front of you for probably, say, probably two or three years at this point with varying permutations of an application. And I guess we're the first penny pig on the pre-submission conference. But that's fine, because we basically revamped the project. And at this point, what the board has in front of them, the most recent plans, don't show any significant addition to the building whatsoever. All this really is, is a change, a permitted change of use on the second floor from residential to commercial, i.e. a restaurant. The moving and addition of seats, which are done on a, on an administrative level, the creation of the addition of those seats, don't require any additional parking, and it's the addition of, I think, 41 seats to the second floor. And the only proposed construction addition on the second floor would be the hydroponic garden, which already exists to some extent on the property, as well as the addition of a refrigeration unit on the second floor, which will not block anyone's windows. And so we basically pared the project down to the only thing that we really need, which is the refrigeration unit. As I said, the other part of it is a permitted change of use appearing in front of you for site plan review, although it is a permitted change. There are no parking requirements that are affected by this. I think the board has a lot of calculations on that. And I think that's about it. I'll let Sal go over with you the actual plans, in case you have any questions with respect to that. But like I said, we've been through a lot of iterations, and I think we finally pared down to exactly what the applicant needs and wants, which is additional restaurant space, which food board's edification is going to be used as special event space. Page has had a tremendous number of requests in the past few years for special events, like weight, bed and showers, baby showers, things for the fire department, ambulance for all of those types of organizations that want to have organized parties. We really have no place to do it other than to rent out the entire restaurant. So this space upstairs would be a separate part, although attached to the restaurant would be a separate part of the restaurant that could be used for some of those special events. We'll be still maintaining the service downstairs.
Are you saying it would be primarily a special, special event space, or?
As many as they can probably book up there. Again, the seating.
But otherwise would be used?
Otherwise, it could be used as a normal restaurant space.
Right, okay.
And like I said, the seating, the seating increase is a result of the calculations done by a code change that were, it was done administratively quite a few years ago. Page had not been able to take advantage of that administrative increase in the number of seats, because they didn't have the physical space. But now that we're opening up the second floor, that would be adequate space for the 41 seats.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Sal Sisrally, I'm the architect of Page. I'll try to share my screen over.
Yes, I'll be there.
I could have come up on my screen.
No, I just need you to come up.
I know, but I can't. I have to share. My screen. I don't like it. It's my iPad. Okay, so upstairs, we are extending our seats and pretty much keeping an open floor plan at some new front office states. We will have an elevator for the school, for the building inspector, after the wind blowing, and then we'll dispose that needs to be there.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask the speaker to speak up a little bit louder?
Yeah, we're keeping an open floor plan for our seats. Be just flexible upstairs. We're also going to have a small office for the workers. And pretty much that is, we have a gap room, an elevator. And we'll be all, keep us fine, but. Upstairs, you know, we're allowed 41, but because of the partial and employees, so it's really like 30. 39, it's gonna be 39 seats, but that will leave some part.
That's it? Oh, you said there are several things percolating in my head. I'll start with one of them. Aquaponics is existing now. I haven't been up there and seen it, but so, so it's not, it's not on the existing chart. Okay, so that, that's, that's, that refrigerator is not there. The mechanical equipment is, so you're going to shift things around, I assume.
What's needed, if we need to like upgrade. We're going to try to just screen that off. Right now, it's just used like open storage and, you know. Then we're next, we're going to clean that up. And one part of the plants, just some garden space will help.
Okay. And so the, the second floor is presently an apartment. Primarily, looks like. It looks like there's a skylight over the roof of the dining area down below.
Yeah, there's six, there's six skylights.
That's safe.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have that one.
This is, this is from, this is from last month on the month.
Oh, okay.
This is old material. I'm happy to share this. This is, feel free, it's simple, my shoulder, if you want to. First floor plan, second floor plan. This is what they're proposing. And that's for the patio. So you, you, the, okay, so upstairs would be tables and chairs, there's an outdoor garden patio area, which has skylights in it, but it's a garden patio area.
The big atrium, the big atrium window, that one is coming out. I thought, those are the smaller skylights.
Okay, so that one goes up. All right.
Will the patio be used for tables, dining?
Yes, but it's, we more have more people than we're allowed. So if it's like a 40 persons party, then some seats will be outside and some will be inside.
You said something about 39 seats versus 41 seats.
Yeah, I mean technically on the parking, they're allowed 41. But because we will need some more employees upstairs, they gave the spot per employee. So we need three additional employees up there. So it really brings us seats down to three.
39 seats.
We're entitled to 41, but we brought it down for the three additional employees that'll be required for the upstairs space.
Okay.
To account for that.
Okay.
That's on the S1 sheet, there's a lot. I know that table's a bit long, but parking and seat counts.
Yeah. Folks, if you have any questions, just come for them.
If you're asking, is the existing stair, the width and distance enough for egress, either the second floor? Because it looks like you only have one egress stair. Three years in the existing stair.
Stair out towards Division Street. So they could go, let's say, out the patio area or the kitchen area.
We have this little thing over here. I would just look at that, for, for your, you know, how you're egressing out of the space.
Sal, this may not be your purview, but I have questions about seats and numbers and calculations. And I'm sure, we don't need to resolve it here, but I'm sure that's going to be something that's going to need to be resolved at some level as this goes forward. So those are questions I have. Primarily, I'm looking at Backpage, which has zero seats shown on it, and I don't know how that calculates in. But my guess is that's going to be, that'd be something you'll need to address at some point.
Backpage has no, Backpage has no legal restaurant seating. So the seating, the calculation that we came to was based upon the current certificate of occupancy. And the calculations of the additional 41 seats was based on the certificate of occupancy for restaurant seating. The seats that are in Backpage are not technically restaurant seats.
And where are they?
That's a good question for the village to answer, because there is stipulation of settlement. And there is a subsequent zoning board appeals decision, which sort of leaves those seats like as the waiting area. I, I, you know, I don't really have any great explanation for how those seats ended up there and how they continue to be there. But they're not intended to be restaurant seats. They were never intended by the village to be restaurant seats, and they were not used in any calculation to move towards this.
Okay.
To move towards this.
That, okay. That's a, that's a, in my, I'm just, I'm just.
It's an enforcement issue for the village, without a doubt.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and we're happy to, we're happy to comply with that. As I said, though, the, the calculation itself didn't come from any, we didn't go and count the seats there. It came from the actual certificate of occupancy, which does not include those seats as restaurant seats.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I, I know that this is, you know, bothersome to some people, or not bothersome, just irksome, to the extent that it doesn't require any parking. But for the board's edification, it's been an administrative process for probably the last 10 years, since, since the village adopted the new parking regulation as it pertains to restaurants. So basically, the way it was working was, if you had enough space in your restaurant, all you had to do was come in with a new plan, seating plan for your restaurant, a letter calculating the number of seats that you were entitled to increase to. And the building inspector would then issue a revised certificate of occupancy with the new seating. So it was just done, and it's been done in almost every restaurant in the village thus far. There's a few that it hasn't been done in. So to the extent that space was allowable when they changed from three parking spaces for each seat to four, everyone went back and just recalculated, and that was permitted to be done administratively. So long as it had fire code and
Okay.
and other sorts of things. So it's not something necessarily that. I understand you want to understand the calculations, and I'm happy to.
Yeah.
But it is something that's administrative, normally.
I don't think we'll solve that problem, issue tonight.
Yeah.
But I think it is an issue that will be looked at, going forward, by whomever, zoning board, planning board.
There's precedent, though. So it is something, as I said, that if they had room, it's face like you go in today and ask for that very same. It's not really actually committed by the board.
Okay, and, and then parking, are we saying we presently have, what are we saying we have presently parked for parking? I seem. I'm a little confused by the negative one. I'm not sure what I'm saying.
So first floor, so the CO is for 141 seats. And that's one space for three seats. So if space is required and pre-existing presumably under the code is a 49th parking space. Grandfathered parking spaces.
Okay.
Seats are added to that based on the fact that there was this two, four bedroom apartment upstairs.
Okay.
The, the table is a little bit confusing, but once you go through it with the building inspector, I think he understands, he understood what was going on there. So it's just a matter of.
Okay, and truck loading? I'm seeing that on the same, on the same sheet. It seems to indicate we have, you have a spot for truck loading.
There is, there is a parking space in the back that's indicated on sheet S1.
And that would be the truck loading space you're, you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
That honestly doesn't currently exist on the map.
Right.
So it would be additional parking. It would add a parking spot. But it would be added to the site in the location where the Backpage seating is contained. So that would resolve that issue.
Okay.
Tiffany? I realize this has gone through multiple iterations, and it's becoming simpler and simpler.
Yes.
That I understand. But there a special event of any kind that would occupy that space is going to require people arriving approximately the same time. And that was one of the fundamental issues with the original iteration, which included expansion of the second floor and all that stuff. And there was a, a comment long ago, years ago, that there would be maybe offloading of people where Backpage was, and then that caused a little kerfluffle as a concept, and so on and so forth. But we're still at the point where 40 people or whatever the number is are going to be entering at the same time. And is, is that going to be through the front entrance of the facility or?
I'm probably with the third main street now, or primarily we were thinking Division Street was the way, but now our potential is more.
Right, that's where the gas and dirty municipal parking is on Main Street. And on the other side of the street and back of Main Street. There is some parking, as we know, on Washington Street and nearby, occasionally right back here. As far as, you know, parking and loading and all of that stuff goes, I don't know that those same questions were asked of any other restaurant that extended their seating. So I understand the question very much so. And I understand that we're here for site plan approval for the change of use to the upstairs. But to that, again, I would say it is a permitted change of use that does not trigger an increase in parking under the code, like just by the nature of the way that code is drafted. So to the extent that we can explain to you that people will be coming into the front door, I, I don't know how much more we can give you with respect to the amount of traffic, because technically speaking, under the village code, it doesn't create another traffic war, because the village board has already made a determination that's four restaurant seats equals one parking spot. So that determination, in some respects, has already been made for this board.
Yeah, when we discussed this last time, it was this concept about valet parking. I don't know if that's still in the concept, or people are just going to go park and walk in and.
Well, we could say the same about restaurants now.
That kind of solves your problem, right?
I mean, if we had, you know, a valet parking service for Staten Harbor Village, it'd be fine shape. You know, but to the extent that most of the restaurants in the village have already done this expansion, you have not seen any significant changes that you could point to. Or point to any specific restaurant that's causing that change to occur. So. I don't necessarily.
Right, but you're not proposing any valet parking concepts?
Not at this time, no.
Because that's kind of what triggered it last time when we had this discussion, was there this concept of valet parking, when they, which I don't think the other restaurants, at least I know of, have valet. You just park and you go to the, you know, restaurant, which solves your problem.
Which, which other?
Which solves your problem, right? I don't know any other restaurants on the.
That have valet, right.
That have valet, so.
I mean, even, even the agreement that the American Hotel, like with the bank is now defunct, and so that, you know, potential, you know, relief from parking has gone away. So. And the parking situation in the village is, is what it is.
Right, yes, it is. I agree with you on that. The parking situation is what it is.
And there's no more going to be.
I, I don't know that I fully agree with the, with the statement that, that the parking is not affected by this plan. I'm not in position to talk about that, but I hear your contention. Can I shift the conversation for a minute to another area, which is village business, this is a piece of the code, village business district, district special conditions 300-6.4, which says maximum gross floor area of any use shall not exceed 2,000 square feet.
We realize that we need architectural review approval for the 3,000 square foot and over. It's an ARB determination based upon, I just read through earlier, and I believe it's based upon the exterior additions and.
No, I'm talking about use. I'm talking about use.
Right, it's 3,000, and it's supposed to be ARB.
I don't think that's right.
I will go back and look at that.
So, so there, 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 we'll, we'll look at that. There's a use variance and an area variance. Or a use issue, and, and so I'm talking about the use. So the restaurant's presently 3,000 or something square feet. So it's over.
Right, including the kitchen, I think it's just over 3,000 square.
So we're adding a second floor makes it another 2,000 something square feet. Which is something that needs dealing with, either with variance, or there needs to be conversation about that. Not permitted by code automatically, by right. I believe.
We're aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Drainage issues? Has there been talking, has there been any discussion about that?
Yeah, we have provisions for drainage. It's mostly going to go in on the Division Street side. That when we were doing a much larger scheme, we had a lot more roof area, and we were still able to fit all the drainage in the back. So now we're much reduced, so we've, we've done drainage counts, it wasn't, we just showed them existing footprint, but we can definitely fit.
Okay.
It'd be on the survey, but.
Right. And, and it's your, let's talk about the walk-in refrigerator for a second as well. Are, is, are you saying that's not an expansion? It's your contention that's not an expansion of the.
Yeah, just because I'm not, I guess I wouldn't consider it like habitable. It's more like a pre-dead unit that they need to where they're breaking through the wall so that they don't have to go outside. It's all in the health code.
So I, I think at the most, we're talking around 100 square feet, the walk-in.
Right.
Which, three stories are permitted.
That's on the second story, right? Got it, okay. All right. If you guys have any more questions at the moment, I'd like to open it up to, to, I think maybe Kathy might have some comments, or Liz might have some comments, I'm not sure.
I, I think you covered everything that we had talked about over here. The drainage. But you also, in doing those calculations, you have to incorporate the roof, the new roof area that is on Backpage, or is that?
Yes, it would be included too.
Okay, and I would show that on the plan.
Yeah, I'll have.
And then the typically, if you're, you know, if you've already done that. If you could.
I'm happy to submit all the letters that I have drafted, and these new COs that have been issued with respect to the number of restaurants that have increased their seating administratively. Happiest event I was born.
That's going to be a deep dive, looking at those, all that paperwork. I bet you do, yeah. Good for you. Folks, do you have any more questions at the moment, or any, any, any thoughts about this? Yeah, thank you.
I only, I only just have one comment. It's not, not that it means, you know, not that it changes anything, because it's allowed use under the current code to modify that space, but, you know, we've been talking for years about our issue with housing in the village, and now we're removing another house, or another unit for, you know, housing for people. So I'm only making the comment, I, I know we can't do it.
I know, and I appreciate the concern, I really do, and I would encourage all of you to, to support future affordable housing endeavors. The only thing I would say about this particular apartment is that it, prior to it being Paige, obviously, the spinners is owned by a different family. That family lived upstairs since it's been owned in current ownership. That owner has used the space for employee housing. He since purchased a house in another jurisdiction where it's a little easier to house people. And so that space is no longer needed for him to do that. So it's, so to, and I, I, I understand the point, but it's not necessarily an apartment that was in our affordable.
I'm just making.
It was a four bedroom apartment, but not one that wasn't, that was necessarily in our inventory.
I'm just making the comment, because it's, this is really a trustee level issue. It's not really for us, because it is part of.
It is, and I think the difficulty in the village business district is prohibiting business uses in the business district. So that's really run into a prohibition issue, like changing those uses.
I, I hear you're saying, and I, and I don't disagree with it at all, it's, you know, it's, it's, but it is a present primitive back, and it is a trustee issue. I'd like to open this up to the public, if, if anyone in the, in the room or elsewhere has any comments or questions on this particular application. I'd be very happy to hear them.
Can I just say, without seeing this, we can't respond to it without it being either.
Plans are available in village hall. We've been trying to get them up on the screen, and I don't know if Darce has the ability to do that.
So not, I, I don't disagree with you, I hear you. Um, what, what I, what I can say is that I, I have some, some drawings here. Nothing is new, nothing is newly being built on the exterior of the building, except for what we mentioned about a, a refrigerator on the second floor on, on backside. But the, the building from the outside will look substantially, will look the same. It's not gonna change. It's the, it's the use of the interior space on the second floor. Mainly, mainly. Yeah. Right. Okay, so, um, no, no other comments from the, from, uh, anyone in the audience, for the public? Liz, can you, can you explain to us?
So now you're gonna, yeah, so if there's no public comments, you would close the public hearing with a ten day written comment period pursuant to the code. And then after the ten day written comment period, um. Uh, now, so before he's written a pair of pre-submission, um, reports, and that would be presented at your next meeting and given to the applicant.
And if for.
And then they would have a certain amount of time to submit the formal site plan application.
So in this, in this report, which will come from us, from the next, at the next meeting perhaps?
Yeah, it'll be presented probably, well, it's depending on the timing.
Yes.
It's depending on the timing, it'll be presented at the next meeting or the next one.
For January.
And then you'll go through the report with, uh, with Kathy and, and then adopt the report, and then it would be issued to the applicant. And all of the planning issues would be cited in the, in the report.
Excuse me, can we be a little quiet in the audience, please? It's a little noise. It's hard for us to hear up here, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, go on.
So then, you, you know, she would present the report, you would make sure all the planning issues were cited in the report for the board and for the applicant to move forward.
Okay, okay.
And the applicant has a certain amount of time to submit a formal site plan application.
Um, and so in this, in this, in this timeframe, we will have time to sort of talk through, maybe speak with the, um, the.
At the next board meeting, if, if the time allows, cause there's a ten day written comment period.
That's right.
And, and then starts the clock for the report. See you in like five months. Um, but I guess my question is, I know I forgot, cause I got distracted. You're gonna push back five months. It's not five months, it's a ten day written comment period for the. And then thirty days. And then they have thirty days to, to present the report to the board.
Right.
And try to get back here.
Right.
I had a very specific question in our crowd, if I can think of it, or a comment.
Well, it's okay, if you think of it again, you can, you can. We're open, we're open to you. Well, okay, so, um, and then this, and then to, to the extent that, depending on the report, it will go, this, this application will go forward to the zoning board or other places.
Well, then the applicant would, would decide how to proceed after she gets her report.
Okay.
Or, right, if she gets, now I know what your question was, it was a very, a very obvious question, which is that this is considered a pre-submission conference.
Yes.
But this application in fact was submitted probably three years ago, so am I resubmitting a new application all over again? Well, it's, it's pretty significantly different than the application that you submitted. Um, so I don't know what Kathy would need that's new. Maybe she could take a look. I did a revised DAF. And see if there's any, anything that we can get away with not requiring new, you know, any new information. Exactly, she could look and, right, no. So whatever it is that you need that's revised. Well, that and the report. Perfect, that's a good idea. Yeah, but not an application itself, the fees and all of that, since we've been in the planning process now for, she'll put that way a lot. Okay.
Good, thank you. I suspect the, the report will have specifics in there of things that we're interested in, and we'll have time to sort of research things like, things like seating and parking and things like that. Wonderful, okay. So if that's all from this group and from the, from the audience, then I will, I guess, close the public meeting.
Close the public hearing with a ten day written comment period.
Close public hearing with ten day written comment period. I'll accept the motion to close. All those, second, all those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. And people can write in as well, people can email in, or write in to, to the village. If anyone's online, I'm not sure what's, what's going on there. Thank you Tiffany and, and Sal. We'll move on to the next item, correspondence requiring action, one hundred Glover Street LLC. Um, this has been with us for a while as well. And I think we're up to the final bit on that. We received some correspondence today, let's see. Nelson Popevorkis sent a memo to us. Basically saying, well, I'll read the last bit, based on review of the various documents that have been determined, the final subdivision plan fulfills requirements of the conditional approval. We, we had a conditional approval, and therefore it'd be appropriate for the planning board to consider approving the final submission by authorizing the chair to sign the map. Kathy, am I, am I right in, in, that's, that's the next step?
Yes, and there is one. Appetite that is required of the owner, which states that they will comply with the conditions. Um, and that was submitted today, uh, by email, and I did check the meeting bounce decision, uh, and went over that with Matt Ivins. Um, and that makes, it matches the site.
That's all good. Okay, so everything that we required or requested has been complied with. So I think what's needed for me, for, first for us to, um, a motion basically for me to sign the map and complete this process. Am I right about that? Um, so if, if you folks understand that, and, and you're good with that.
I'm good with it.
Good. I'll accept the motion to, uh, to, uh, to allow me to sign the map and, and finalize this.
So moved.
Seconded by Granja, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. So Doris, I'll need to. Sign something before I leave today. Wonderful, thank you. Good. Thank you, Matt Ivins, nice to see you. Pre-submission conference, eleven Bridge Street LLC. So we are not having that pre-submission conference tonight, this is to set up. Request a pre-submission conference for, for next month, um, to adopt the resolution to, uh, we're, we're looking to adopt a resolution tonight to set the pre-submission public hearing for the next meeting. The next meeting will be December twenty. It's a.
Need a resolution for that?
Yeah.
Resolution for.
The new date.
Meeting date to December twenty.
Oh, I do need a resolution for that, okay. So we need, you need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's do that first. Let's do, um, I think we. Agree that December twenty would work for many of us, or enough of us to have a call.
Three of you, yes, Nat, Larry and yourself.
Right, so, uh.
So I'll pick, I'll pick Nat up and make sure.
That he comes, cause you're in the call, and we.
Wonderful.
Oh, you will.
And you can also show up by Zoom if necessary.
I, yeah, I could on route to the airport.
Okay, if, if. Okay, so I'll accept the motion for, for.
So moved.
Thank you, Granja, seconded.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, so we now have December twenty, Wednesday, as our December meeting date. And we're doing this for, for clarification, removing that because otherwise it would have been a day or two after Christmas, and that's problematic for all sorts of reasons. That's right, it's December twenty. Okay, so now the preliminary site plan application, it would be for that day. We have, in, in our possession, by the way, now, this, this is, um. This big chunk of paperwork is, is eleven Bridge Street, so. All I need is a motion to, to, um. Adopt the resol- adopt the resolution for the December, the pre-submission conference for eleven Bridge Street on December twenty.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, good. So we will be here on December twenty talking about eleven Bridge Street. Next item, discussion review item. This is simply a couple items. The trustees have been very good about lately, about wanting to get input from the various boards. Um, and they came to us with a couple of things in the past, um, clearing, say, and tree issues. This came across us, and I, I thought that we should just, not that we have to talk about it, but I wanted more to be aware of it, and it's a good habit to get into knowing what's going down the pipe, particularly when it relates to planning.
Right.
And things like that. So, um, these are the two, and they're coming up for public hearing on December twelve. It's, um, uh. Public hearing considering a code change on the hours permitted for construction activities, that's one of them, and the other is the, uh. Local law amending village code regarding fences, walls, gates, increase in the height of permitted gates. If you have any comments, if you have any, any concerns, you can bring it up, otherwise I just wanna make sure you all know what's happening. Good. Therefore, there's nothing else I believe in the audience tonight, no one online, right? Is that Doris?
Okay, it's correct, I have, no, no hands.
Then I think we're good for adjournment. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Granja, seconds? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you all, very much. Well done.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.